Okay, I'd like to call this meeting of the Kamara Eagle Area School District School Board to order at seven o'clock and leave the roll call.
Kristiana Williams.
Here.
Michael Huddy.
Here.
Zachary Radkowski.
Here.
Doris Carson.
Here.
Jane Reed.
Here.
Tara Roy.
Here.
Mitzi Roches.
Here.
Totally have a quorum. We give you permission statement to ensure that students excel with intellect and virtue inspired by innovative educators who engage and challenge each individual. Would you all join me in the pledge? Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Can we have a motion to approve the agenda?
Make motion to approve the agenda.
One second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Host? Agenda is approved. Public comment. We don't have any that came in via email. Is there anybody here that would like to make a public comment? All right, then. We'll go on to board monitoring. Number one, WASB honor roll awards. This is something that when the PR committee and organizations in the community were put forth to receive these awards and we have people here, I think that obviously were worthy enough to get them, so we would love to honor them and have them come forward. I think Todd and Caitlin are doing that.
Right. And our first one is Chuck Dolly, representing People, Golden Market.
I love the Eagle Golden Market. They have done fundraisers for our elementary school and everything there and it's fantastic.
Yeah, and just a couple of words, you know, we opened, we wanted to be about community and engaging the community and, you know, it's been a quick year already and we're really fortunate because I think we've connected and created a place and experience with the community and then I also want to acknowledge that this school district as well as the other schools surrounding schools in the area, we're really, really fortunate to get a lot of the kids from the area working at the market and, you know, if anybody is a little worried or tentative about the future of, you know, what the future holds, the kind of crazy world that we're in, work with some of these kids that come from your school as well as others and I'll tell you right now, they're bright, they're smart, they learn fast and, you know, I think, you know, the future's in good hands. So we're really appreciative of the kids that we see coming out of your school district as well as some of the other shrines, really good set of values. Thank you.
Thank you.
And our next recipient is Eagle Fire Department, represented by Chris Hime.
Something missed on the behalf, on the behalf of the Eagle Fire Department, I have now since retired.
But that's another thing, the elementary kids love going to the fire department and going to the smokehouse and all that and so thank you so much for all you do.
Our pleasure.
Caitlin, did you get a good picture?
No, I did not.
I did, but so, uh, should we redo it? We are, we are gonna need good PR. What about the first recipient? Did you get, or we could get through?
You can get a skit.
Yeah, let's go.
Okay.
All right. Gotta think about PR.
Right. And our third recipient is Village of Eagle Police Department, represented by Gray.
Should I come, should I stage? Don't.
Wait, can you put cops on?
I didn't bring them there. I'll make sure I suck in for the picture. I also just, I retired from the city of Milwaukee after a 25-year career and you don't really get to engage with the community at that level, which is really nice about the small town feels is like, I could do this another 20 years, but I'm not gonna, but probably. I really enjoy it and I really love getting into the school. I try to get there every day, I think, developing those relationships with the kids early on, letting them see that, you know, the cops don't just have to come when something bad is happening, one of them will have to positive, they have access. And we're kind of like front to the kids as well as the principal and the parent school staffs. We have a really great working relationship. I can't officially say this because I don't really, and they have a horse in this race. I'm glad this was me, I spread it out to the other school. So, thanks.
Our fourth recipient is Lakeside BP, represented by Pete.
All right.
Thanks.
Thank you. You guys have a lot, you guys can talk too.
Yeah, but we can talk. You, you have done so much for us.
Yes.
That gives me Zoe.
It's fantastic. I love pulling up to the Purple Pump, I honestly get down to where I have pews. Thank you. Thank you. And we have one more, the Elspiker Library and Ellie is not here to be with us today.
She actually messaged me yesterday, I know her, she wrote some more stuff than I do and she was very disappointed she had the name of the Lions Club tonight, so she couldn't be here, but she was very appreciative, it was a surprise that she was taking and honoring her, so she really enjoyed it. Mention how much she enjoys the relationship and working with the school and the kids and so it was very exciting.
Katie maybe can say something. They got snowshoes for all the kids.
Yes, specific to the library, we just worked on a partnership grant which granted approximately 30 pairs of snowshoes that are shared between the elementary school and the local library. Mr. Day will appropriate them to his gym classes and then on weekends they can be paired with the library that families can check out. But I wanted to say to those individuals who came tonight though, we were asked to identify people in our community that really supported students, this was not a hard task at all, it was very easy to identify adults, so it stepped up, stepped forward and stepped up for kids, so we appreciate it right from the beginning.
Okay. The library.
And you got a look.
Can I try and do a picture?
Yeah.
Thank you all for coming.
Enjoying the show.
Thank you.
Lovely to talk today.
Okay, COVID monitoring is next for board monitoring. Carrie, do you have anything to say?
Willie, just, just a couple things, looking for some kind of feedback. If you've been watching the dashboard, we've kind of been circling around this five number for, for a while. We had a little, little issue at the middle of high school that I attribute to homecoming. We have a couple cases kind of since then, but really nothing horrible, still nothing that we attribute to direct spread within the building, so I feel completely safe continuing to have classes and just continuing to put that information out there for families. Where I'm looking just, I guess, for a little thought from the board, and I did email Todd this last week, we were contacted by Jefferson County Health Department, they are looking to basically find facilities within communities where they can run five to 11-year-old vaccine clinics for students only within that community. So the thought would be they would utilize the community center, they would be the one running it, it's not us, but it would only be open to our students, not necessarily students who live within the Jefferson County, but only PEASD students would be able to come into the clinic and utilize that at that time. So they want me as a next step to survey the community and see if there's interest, they don't want to come, I mean, they're not going to come down if there's no community interest, but if there's interest, they're willing to do it. So I guess looking from a board standpoint, if there's concerns about at least sending the survey and seeing if there's interest and then if there is interest about allowing the community center to be utilized for the vaccine clinic.
Can I just ask why they wouldn't allow, so like, I mean, we do have like a decent homeschool population.
So they've had some issues.
Why only?
So they've had some issues with outside people coming into the clinics with not good intentions. At other clinics they run, they've had some, for lack of better words, some people there to protest or take videos or things like that, so they are concerned with, basically with that.
Oh, I see.
With privacy of the people who are getting the vaccine, not wanting their, their situation to be disrupted and they feel like us knowing our community and our students is their easiest way to control it. I know Cambridge is doing something not through them though, and so basically just looking for thoughts on if we don't want to, if you want me to survey the community and see if there's interest, I can go either way on it.
Well, I don't, my opinion is I don't think it affects us one way or, I mean, it's the community, it would be setting up at the town hall.
No, it's not me here.
I know, but it's just because it's our building, I mean, it's not, we're not.
Correct.
Asking our children to be vaccinated, we're not.
No.
Forcing it upon parents, we're not, I mean, it's, it's not, it's a here and there, here in this state, this is what you want to do.
Yeah.
I, I see no harm in that.
I don't see harm either, but I almost think that maybe utilizing the elementary building in case on the off chance there were any concerns or issues that might come to light.
I think they may be concerned with that just from a safety standpoint, you know, if a kid were to have a reaction or something like that, I don't know if they would rather be here where there's more humans to be bluntly, I, I can ask.
Just a mark.
We would have to have, you know, Rich would have to be able to set up chairs and things like that, I mean, I can, location would be determined after we know if there's enough interest.
Would this be something going like during the school day?
No, evening, weekday, but evening probably, weekends are really hard for them, so probably, you know, five to seven, four to eight, depending on interest, but it would be in the evening.
My hope is, I think it's a community room, it's given for that purpose, so it's kind of where I go on it. Historically lies its, what the view of this room like?
As long as it's being driven by Jefferson County, you know, our school district is an independent function and the people showing up will be the only ones with approving parents. I'm okay with such a.
They have their reasons.
It's their choice.
I think it's a fabulous idea to survey our community and utilize our building. I remember as a child having audio munitions in a school building, you know, and it was done by the organization, so I see no reason to bear.
Yeah, first step would be basically a survey that requires an email address just because I don't, I want legit information, yes or no, and if you say yes, how many, how many kids would get vaccinated, there's no other information parents would be giving me if they're interested, if we do move forward with it, there's a sign up link that's run by Jefferson County, not run by us, all I would do is disseminate the information, which is really all I've done so far with anything vaccine related for staff, just, I just put the information out there, people do whatever.
And book the room through the district office.
They would, yeah, they would do a facility request and, yeah, I mean, we would, we would do everything probably, but again, they, I'm looking for just ways to maybe help some people who won't go to Jefferson, aren't comfortable going to Walgreens.
It's a car they drive.
Yeah.
The other thing I remember will be Karen having my kids vaccinated at Methodist Church, so if it comes back, I do know that the different community churches have opened up to Jefferson County in the past.
Do you okay if I survey and see if there's, I mean, if there's not interest, it won't happen. So the first step would just be the survey six through 5K parents, basically. Okay.
I think as long as you make it clear that this is not.
Yeah, I can send you the wording on the top of the survey before I send it, I have it done, I don't know if you guys looked over, I have it done, it would be the week of the 20 seconds, so I need, I need to get moving on collecting some data for them, so I'll send it to you maybe even here while the meeting's going on and you can look it over and make sure you think it's clear enough. People don't always read when I put it on there, but I will do the best I can to make it, to make it clear.
Is there any huge objections? No.
All right. Okay, number three in board monitoring, 2022 Seminary Convention, which is taking place live this year in January. Caitlin will register, any board members that are interested in going to, I believe, a three-day convention, I don't know, Tara has board information, anyone saying about that?
I have so much more, I know we get early bird discount, you can register by December 15, basically a Wednesday through Friday, so all people probably kind of go in on Wednesday, Thursday, maybe Sunday, Thursday, Friday. It's in Milwaukee and Wisconsin, so I think five, you're kind of away from their.
Those are always the cold season.
But is it January?
Yeah, yeah. In fact, if they have the convention in July, I don't know, I think it just follows that convention. But if you've ever had this part of the city in Milwaukee, it's.
Awesome, yay.
Well, whoever's interested can let Caitlin know, get registered, let there's groups going and certainly we're not going to spend the night in Milwaukee, so just go, maybe we can take a school band and powerful together if there's enough people going, so it's interesting, there's different seminars and it's helpful, so we'll see what that, but yeah, we should get in on the early bird.
I would expect it'll be typically with your visiting last year, I would, I would guess it'll probably be a great session because I think, you know, a lot of times it'll be a session, but this year, there'll be some things going on, certainly with everything going on, there'll probably be a lot of different seminars, some legal issues, SFR two three, you know, a lot of command and stuff going on, it's, it's good to hear what other boards are doing other than just, you know, reading about.
Great, anybody else want to add? Okay, four, FFA National Convention, I believe we have people here who attend.
So, Mitchman is our FFA writer, she does writing on the convention tonight, but she wrote these two lovely jumbo messages coming in to talk to you a little bit. So four of them went, Stacy Johnson, I can't remember where they are, I was in the building yesterday, and Oliver Fiskie, they were not able to be here, but Rowdy Camber, Mason Lysowitz, who are both juniors, were here and went on the trip, so they're gonna, they're gonna tell you a little bit about what they did, so I'm gonna turn it over to them.
Well, what do you guys want to know?
What did you do?
Tell them what you did, what you saw.
I had, I had a son that go, Mitzi had a son that went, we got to go, but.
Well, give us a little recap of what FFA is and does all year and then you can tell us what you did there, but kind of, I mean, for people who don't even know what FFA is.
So FFA is an organization that's open to anybody, you don't have to necessarily be within farming. Like Stacy Johnson, she's not necessarily, she's not involved with farming, but she's still involved with FFA and she really enjoys it, I think. And it's just an open community almost for kids to kind of get to know each other, like get to know other people throughout the state and the country. It's just a really good place to learn more about, especially, I live on a farm, we raise beef cattle and we were with horses and cattle all the time and it's just a good way for people to understand exactly what's going into that and just kind of get off their mind.
Yeah, it's just a good thing, like, like about rosy things, like, you're not stuck in a classroom, like, you get to go outside and like be with animals or you get to go and learn about other things that isn't math and science and all that stuff, so just like, it's another way to just explore what the whole school and FFA has offered.
So where was the convention in?
Indiana, I was in Indiana.
All right. So you guys see anything or did you see an hotel in the whole town?
No, we, on the way down, we went on Tuesday and we went down and we went, on the way down there we sat, there was a Carol's Dairy Farm. Carol's Dairy Farm, it's a big multi-million dollar dairy farm, they're pretty old in town that they're in. We went there and we took a tour of the farm and everything. We learned about and kind of exactly how bigger dairy farm functions, because I worked on a smaller dairy farm and just the difference between the two is just pretty neat to see then we got there. We stayed, we went out to eat on Tuesday and Wednesday we went to the convention hall and we did some seminars, we watched the opening session and that was really cool to watch. We met, who was the key speaker, Sam?
Well, I tried to be sheltered, so.
Yeah, she, she started off kind of in a not-so-great family and she brought herself up and now she's a multi-million dollar speaker and just kind of, it was cool to see how she succeeded, succeeded through her faith, because she was involved in that. Thursday, we went out and we did an apple orchard thing, we wanted to go to that, but it was, got ran out and then we tried to go to another place for those folks, so we kind of just went back to the convention hall, we watched another session and Thursday, we did keep that, right?
That type of concert.
I was gonna say, got to go to a concert, the rodeo, come on.
They're giving over elegance.
Well, I got a good little stuffy.
Yeah, try to get into the education.
We had, we had a Fred Duff concert and they had, it was Alex Miller that started the performance and Fred finished it. Alex Miller talked a lot about how FFA helped him and like he did a talent show on FFA and that led to him having a music career and all that stuff. Well, FFA's helped him in that way.
Do you guys need other FFA members from other places?
We have, we have kids all over the place from Tennessee, Texas, I saw, we saw one from Puerto Rico.
Rhode Island.
Yep. People actually across the way from us. The old town was here and the hotel right across here from the island, they were some really cool people, we actually met pretty good. We actually met up with them at the convention hall, we, we met with them, they all did, so it was just kind of cool to, to get out there, get to know people, really kind of figure out what's going on, the other person's day.
Did you have a trade show? Did you get to buy things, cool goods or anything, they still have the trade show?
Rodeo too, you did one.
Yeah.
Rodeo, rodeo's good.
How did you stack up compared to the local ones?
She, we went there and it was jam packed, every seat was full. And it's kind of a funny story because the person that won the saddle bronc riding versus barebacks in like bucking horses, I actually did rodeo with him a couple years back.
He's from, uh, Motto, he was Wisconsin.
Yeah, so he, he won the world title and that's a great part of the launch.
What was your favorite part of the trip?
Yeah.
What did you think about the opening ceremony at National Convention?
I thought it was, it was actually, it was really fun, because I remember, I went two years ago and then last year was shut down because COVID, then this year we went back, I went back and then.
This is your first step?
Yeah, this is my first year going.
But where you went across, when?
Yeah.
Like stationed here by the owl and the spotlights and everything.
Yeah, it was very well put together and all that stuff.
It's very professionally done, isn't it?
I thought it was pretty cool when they, at the beginning they name off every state and how many FFA chapters are in there and how many FFA members are involved in the state that might not necessarily be there, but every time that they would say state, the people from that state would cheer, it was just kind of cool that like there were people coming talking behind us and people from California in front of us, it was just kind of, it was weird, but it was cool at the same time.
You guys gonna tell other people, get more, oh, your seniors or you're gonna have juniors, so you're gonna be able to have more people there to make sure, you think?
I think so.
I think we already, we convinced two people to run already after they go back, so if they want to have a say, if they want to go next year.
I would encourage you to develop a judging team so you could be like Mrs. Reed's son and my son and try to compete, it's really an amazing experience.
I did a judge a few years ago, I think, when maybe went to, I don't know, we did like camera judges and stuff like that and that was pretty cool.
Yeah, they were able to go to the nationals and judge because they went to the state of Wisconsin, but it was just to see the caliber of weight people to judge cattle and parker tops and everything.
Or be in the rodeo, win it yourself. There you go.
She doesn't want me to ride bull's tail.
We've got, we've got an FFA alumni chapter.
And I, George just told my thunder, that was the last thing I was gonna say, they sponsored that, so FFA one night, paid for the hotel, paid for registration.
They paid for the.
Yeah, they get concert tickets, the rodeo, all of that, so a big, big thank to them because that's how they get to go and.
Was there four of you guys total?
Yeah, four that went, yeah.
Let's have you next year, that'd be awesome, make this FFA alumni work to get you guys out.
So that, that was a huge amount of money that came into that, so that was a big, I like, a big thank you at the end for it, told my mother.
And he actually had to vote to let you go, because it's an overnight field trip, so you can thank all of you.
Yeah, you can thank all of you.
Stop. Bow to them.
And you guys too, I don't know, I know, Marsha County, FFA has gone by the wayside, so our district is, you might understand, the last district in Marsha County that even has an FFA program.
Oh, kind of one.
Oh, kind of one does, but they're not, they're not Marsha, so.
So, yeah, they're not Marsha County.
Marsha.
So keep it alive, keep it alive, boys.
Thank you for coming.
And it's not us, our people there is gonna be you guys.
Yeah, can you guys work on rodeo for me? I'm kind of, you know, but he's just like.
You know, he fit in.
He what?
Very easily.
Get the line.
Yeah, I was gonna say, that's pretty much the FFA look, right, so, there you go.
They're going back to the.
I want to thank them for giving me half hour on Tuesday night because we wanted to do that, so I appreciate it. Thank you.
It's a good experience for us to be able to go and we might have to take a week off of school and Ms. Fisher probably wasn't too happy about that, but it was just, we're really thankful for you guys allowing us to go and for the alumni to sponsor us through all that, just very thankful for it.
Thank you for representing us so well. I mean, that's awesome, it's some guys like you, the name Kamara Eagle.
Thank you, thank you. Now you gotta go wide through coals. I don't know, those coals don't know what they're one, they gotta go on there. Did they convince you, you gotta have a blue coat yet or not?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
I got, I want, I want to wear one this year.
Yeah, I want to wear one before I graduate, I'm pretty sure.
Actually, Alex Miller, they got open for the concert, he had him, his whole band was involved with that, but then for the last song they all brought their FFA jacket on it.
Wear the gunner. Good job, guys.
Thank you.
See you guys.
Okay, committee reports, PR. Yes, I appreciate, I. PR met October 14th, it's kind of a quick one. We were missing Katie that day, she's our big, one of our big here contributors there. And I know at the time, we were really busy, everyone was really busy with a lot of homecoming activities, we had tons of stuff going on, homecoming, so that was pretty much the bulk of it. And talked about, um, did you talk about TUDS award, his lifetime excellence education award, the Washington Education Foundation, do you have a picture for that?
No, I actually have a draft, but email for that right now.
You want to turn it over that, it was pretty cool.
That's right, you said it, you have a copy.
I have it.
Okay, all right. We also talked about bringing back forward the STEP program, which was the program for tax credits for senior citizens. And I had actually just forwarded an email to Todd and Brad about that, to see if we could revive that, in that program in place, that was kind of put on the back burner. And Caitlin and Katie were working on a, like a quarterly flyer, mailer, so hopefully at our next meeting coming up, we can talk more about that. And it was pretty much just, it was fairly short. We talked about the process that we would go through if we were to consider changing the name of the Eagle Elementary. And we have our next meeting's gonna, that's gonna be the 18th, but I think that's supposed to be the.
I didn't, we didn't appreciate changes, but I'd love to have the original though. Is it now, does HR's 17?
17, yeah. Katie, is there any reason that you can't, can you meet on the 17th, it's gonna be 18?
No, it'll be 17, it'll be fine.
17, yeah. Okay, all right, so we'll do that, and actually it'll be the 17th.
You okay? It won't be 17, so.
Sure. So, how does that work for you?
I, I have no idea.
I have no idea, okay, all right. All right, okay, I think that's all I have. Okay, Chair.
We were able to meet, we have an October meeting and they, we were talking about an update on our.
No, it'll work 17th, it'll be fine.
17th, yeah.
Okay.
So we'll do that. Actually, it'll be the 17th.
You okay?
It won't be 17th.
Sure. How does that work for you?
I, I have no idea.
I have no idea. Okay, all right. All right, okay.
Okay, HR.
We were able to meet. We have an October meeting and they thought we were talking about an update on our salary structure. It's still a work in progress. Shelley's working on portions. Todd is collecting info from others. We should be getting close to having something and an update will be soon because we'll be meeting on the 17th. But it is a work in progress. We also asked Shelley, it's her main task to review the employee handbook. We know that it hasn't been updated in certain areas. We pointed out areas in particular that needs to be updated, discussed those, and she's gonna try to back burner it now. She has some more important things. We're not gonna talk, but so that is a work in progress. We also talked about update on the business offer structure. Johanna is part of her job duties now is she is sitting in the reception area. So that was something we discussed at that time and has since been implemented. So that's the main topics that we covered at October meeting and were set for November 17th.
Okay. Critical policy did not meet this month, but is scheduled to meet next month. All righty, buildings and grounds, the, the October 12th date is correct. They met tonight, 11/9.
All right, building grounds. Our bipolar ionization generators are in both middle school, high school, and the elementary school are installed and working. A quick update on the food service, everything, all the changes that we've made seems to be working very well. We're branch researching a breakfast program, hoping to advance the timeline of that. We're excited to hear more on it next month. We did bring in Ryan O'Shantsey from CCG, who's our road consultant to get to the bottom of an issue regarding the roof. His recommendation is that we install a drain for a pooling problem that we have. We're gonna get that loaded. We'll talk about that again next month. We did find out that Eagle Elementary School has a leak on their roof. Should be addressed in the next couple of weeks as we have some preventative maintenance work that'll be occurring. They'll apply to fix that. Our lighting installation, the update here is that Energy House is gonna begin working either November 15th or 16th. They want to start with the exterior of the high school. Should, the whole project should take about three weeks. The Eagle sign renovation update, all signs have been updated, painted, labeled, and LED inversion. So happy to hear that. Sodio staff is, we have enough people looking for some part-time people of the full-time people that we hired. Huge compliments on their work ethic. Just a big, big pat on the back for the people that signed up to do that. We're readdressing the bathroom quotes. We're scoped down scale of work. And we're talking about going hands-free, so Rich is going to get some quotes on that. Standard process complex. We talked about ensuring that budgetary maintenance items are within an annual schedule that can be managed by the district. We looked at possibly doing a dishwasher, dishwasher upgrade at Eagle Elementary. Very large expense, so we're going to table that for future considerations. We have some dented replacements on middle school, high school. That will also be a future topic of discussion. We also have showers in the high school that are in need of repair. Most need to be put up for that. And lastly, we have a local business in the process that's interested in possibly using Hellmeyer Eagle Elementary leasing out some office space. So it's great to see that, you know, there's a possible partnership with that, that business. So we'll have to see what happens next. That's it.
Can I get bathrooms for the middle school, not the showers?
The high school shower.
No, the middle school. He almost, he said middle.
He said middle school.
But the old high schools.
Okay, well, I'll start one next one.
Thank you, Michael. Finance committee also met tonight, Nancy.
We did meet. We revisited the rafter. Our building security decided to stay with our current policy. Brad will be inducting our budget into Skyward officially and then meet with the administrative team to separate it out if necessary. We discussed money handling procedures for activity accounts, specifically cash handling processes at concessions to cash boxes and verified some procedures and it was on Brad's radar already. And he's working on some tickets and things like that so that we have protections in place for everyone. We reviewed the voucher list. I had a question since we had said there weren't going to be any roof repairs and then there was a voucher for our roofing company, but it was for the routine maintenance. And then we really didn't know other financial issues since our annual meeting was so fabulous and the addition to our plan of allowance and the reduction of our debt load and all of those numbers that were shared in our annual meetings. So we had very limited financial information to review. That was it.
Thank you, Nancy. I don't know if there's a WASP update. We talked a little bit about the.
I just said no questions to get out of that.
Yeah, it's fine. Laura likes to talk.
Okay. How long we had one? I like, oh, well. On doors up.
Actually, I can add something to that.
Okay, there we go.
Important today that WASP has pulled out of the.
I read that.
In this letter to the Department of Justice, so apparently this created a lot of problems. I think 20, I don't know, 20 some states, school board associations have pulled out. I think it's too bad.
What's that?
National Association of Schools.
Thank you.
I think it's a good organization. I think they overreacted and they did apologize, but I think it's caused so much guilt well up going now that, you know, a little bit of time to fix it. I guess I'm surprised.
Okay, any administrator reports?
You go. You look at you, we're gonna jump right up.
I've taken notes, there you go. All right, so just to recap, our monster management event, which was very successfully attended, raised nearly $2,500 for our student events and PTO goals for the year. We got a lot of really great feedback and even though it was really wet outside, we moved our haunted house or haunted woods into a haunted hallway. And it went over just fine. This Friday, November 12th, I'd like to invite the board members, if you're interested, to join our Veterans Day celebration in the EES gym from 8:15 to 8:45. We'll have members of local honor guard there, Boy Scouts, the high school band will be coming over to play some pieces. And we have some students doing some reading in conjunction with some local service members. And we've invited, if you're, if students have families who have previously or are currently serving, they're welcome to attend as well. This Sunday, the 14th, our PTO is hosting a photography session for all families who are interested for a low price of $20. You come in and get a professional photography portrait with some different backgrounds. Has a great fundraiser prior to the holidays. As a school, our focus is going to be QIS hallway behavior as we head into what I call the honeymoon is over and we're at the end of the first trimester and kids think that we're back to day one. So we're working really hard as a team to sort of tighten up the hallway behavior. Today, I was actually reached out to by the Eagle Lions Association or club. They would like to donate a memorial maple tree for Karen First, the former secretary at EES for about 20 years. So I'm working with Rich today. I sent him an email. We're gonna figure out how to make that happen and put it with some of the other wonderful memorial trees with a small plaque. And then our successful scholastic book fair, which was held over Conference Week, we sold over, a little over $4,000 in sales. So that brings back like $1,300 in scholastic bucks that went to classroom teachers to purchase books directly for the classroom. So it was a very successful book fair. So.
What do we normally do?
Well, this is the first we've had as a combined elementary school. And you have to have over even $1,000 in sales generally to get like these big rolly carts, you know, kind of like the bigger book fair. And previously, they haven't been able to reach that separately, but together, it's such a large turnout that our book fair for spring will include more items that scholastic will send us. So, yes, it was absolutely awesome. That's kind of where Eagle is at, right? We're recovering from Halloween and we're all actually waiting for Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Katie.
Did you put the candy in the?
I really have. Like, I don't have a dent like you guys have.
I know. I, I feel like I'm gonna just repeat myself now that we're sending stuff to Caitlin and she sends stuff out. I spent the last two days with Jody Dinko and Shelby Nichols at a Google tech summit in the Dells. I learned lots of things about Google that I knew, which was good, that I was doing the right stuff, and some cool stuff that we're trying to figure out how to share. So that was, was good. Some different strategies, different tools, different ways to do things. So that was nice. Ryan, that was sponsored by Ryan and the Tech Budget, so we appreciate him allowing us to go. We're working on Friendsgiving. Some of you probably saw your email today. Going back to the traditional food format, so staff will be making food. We'll be cooking 14 turkeys next week. If you're bored and you want to come cook some turkey, we'll hang out. Shirts, hopefully proceeds of shirts to go to the food pantries again. We're a little unsure on how much the shirts are gonna cost, so I just kept it at 10 bucks. So there may not be as much profit as there is in the past, but if there is any, we'll do that to food pantries. November 23rd, if you want to come and eat, green bean casserole and turkey and all of that. It's a, it's a wonderful, wonderful event. We're still trying to wrap our head on how we're going to serve it. That is my one little hiccup right now is where we're gonna put everybody and how we're going to do that, but, but that will be awesome and well attended. First quarter is done, so honeymoon is definitely over here, probably as well. Moving into second quarter, second quarter is always just this weird chopped up time off, time off, time off, and it's over before we know it. So that is good. Spring, or winter sports has started, obviously, as you heard, middle school boys basketball. Everybody else is practicing, things going on there. I'm trying to think, that's, that's pretty much life here. So, so good. There you go.
Well, we also attended the Skyward conference.
Oh, yeah, you did.
So Katie, Brad and I and a few others, a couple other staff members attended the Skyward conference. We were able to learn some, Katie was able to get some new information on how to do things for summer school. We definitely updated some things on the special ed end of paperwork and was able to discover how to make updates and some other things that we didn't know technical wise. So it was really, really productive.
Great, thank you. Okay, moving on to the consent agenda. Do we have a, a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda is approved. Once again, it's always just nice to look at the fundraisers that people are doing for our students and gifts and donations. So just acknowledgements to the people who are, who are helping us all so much. Action items. A, the motion to consider approval for the line of credit in the amount of $500,000.
I'd like to consider approval for line of credit in the amount of $500,000.
Brad, do you wanna?
Yeah, this is just something similar to last year where they did a lot of credit, $2 million. That was a little late that happened, but this is just ahead of our, a little bit ahead of the game, which just covers us in a backup situation. Touch last year, but this is maybe a little over, I would say, $2 million or so.
To be clear, we pay no interest. There's, there's no fees unless we touch it. And as previously said, we didn't touch it last year and we are pretty sure we're not gonna need it this year, but it's, it's a just.
It's just a.
Just a pillow.
Every split trick kind of goes along with it, so.
It, it also has to be paid back by next November. It follows the same rules and regulations as any other short-term.
The Dinglets and certain Dinglets, yep.
Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Action item B, consider approval of the second reading of revisions to policy 5630.01.
I'll make a motion to consider approval of the second reading of the revisions to policy 5630.01, use of seclusion and physical restraint with students.
Any questions or discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. District administrators and business managers, reports.
Okay, I, I think all the excitement over the yeser is starting to, escher funds starting to die down a little bit because, you know, when it first came out, it was very broad. You could just about spend the money on anything. Now they're, they're starting to hand out some much more restrictive regulations on that. For example, you cannot spend it on capital projects unless it has some relationship to COVID-19. Either remediate like the HVAC filters we were doing or perhaps some kind of infrastructure tied to technology or whatever. But, you know, anything over probably $10,000 unless it's not tied specifically to the COVID situation will probably be denied. And again, any project over $2,000 that's bid out has to include dibs, banking act, federal wage, even though the state of Wisconsin, although there's a federal rules law, the federal government, Department of Education dictates that. Surprisingly, counties and cities do not have to follow that because they are not in the jurisdiction of the Department of Education. But typically, counties, companies and cities have much stronger policies than they, so probably doesn't make much difference, one way or the other. The other piece of it is, as we begin to spend those escher dollars, we need to input stakeholders and that includes staff, inspiration, parents, and even students. So I guess I don't have any more caveats for that one, so it probably doesn't bring it up easy. What you should be doing. But any of that, so, so we will have to schedule some of those kinds, those kinds of segments once we figure out how we can use that, that escher fund. Now, the good news is they, they recommend using it for salaries, staff retention, those kind of things. So the monies we have budgeted for, for the salaries could potentially shift into some of the capital projects that comes out of the fund tab to use escher funds to cover some of the salaries that, that keep the COVID guidelines. And actually, they have the COVID guidelines on salaries and most of them, they are actually far more, far more flexible than using the capital projects. And I noticed, I think, I think that this has happened, is we've seen some situations where districts have taken the COVID money and spent it on things that probably would not be considered a necessity. We've seen that in this particular area of, so maybe Dallas is a particular, I think that's a regulation. But I, it's, I don't, I don't, it's not gonna really impact our budget much. Shift some of those dollars around, we just have to make it sort of down there to make sure we get stakeholders that we're.
And your meeting went well. Fund balance has been the highest it's ever, it's been in the last five years or before that last week. The budget is gonna be inputted in the Skyward, as we mentioned in the finance, so we're gonna be, I'm going to be with all the administrative team as far as putting where we need to allocate, where we need to properly put that. We have actually two applicants already in the last 24 hours as far as the food service director is concerned. So we are going to be applying that tomorrow, actually. So we're moving forward with that. And then that's about it.
The, the fund balance could be the highest of all. I, I went back, oh, one year, I think. I, I was not able to find the number without, I don't know what happened, there's, there's nothing around prior to 2000, but I guess it's based on budgets at the time. I, I doubt you have 50 and 60% fund balances, so I guess this is our all-time highest. And again, fund balance. And again, fund balance is, is a good indicator of financial strength, um, and along with, uh, you know, the balance, funds we've had the last few years. And I think some of the, I call it line sizing, we did, unfortunately, have to close the elementary, but it does, it does represent, um, the continuation of the district. I, you know, thirty-four percent fund balance, I just can't imagine why anyone would think that the districts have serious financial problems. There are a lot of districts in the state who love to have thirty-four percent fund balance.
A lot of districts in the state would love to be us. Like, will our credit rating?
Yeah, we're working on that, they, they won't, um, he, he, he was very positive about our conversation, but he said, I need to see your final audit, the actual book that comes out that, that everyone gets, so. I said, well, I could get you, you know, some certified numbers, and so he goes, no, I wanna see the actual audit book for the audit, um, you know, the, the, well, or, or, you know. That, that I believe will, will be able to get finished, gentlemen.
When do we get the book?
Should we comment in a couple of weeks?
Oh.
Probably December, that's why I'm anxious that we can't.
Any other questions for Todd or Rob?
I think to get the book, will we have a representative of the, I mean, we can't presume. We got the book now.
We did, I mean, we, we can, but I mean, I, I could just play this part.
I just was curious, is that there's some other terms?
Well, a lot of it is, is, is governmental accounting standard course stuff, that it, it really doesn't. I, I mean, I, I think what they've done to school accounting in the state with, with accounting malfunction and some of the other things, governmental kind of standard courses, it's really written in the reports. Very hard to read and not, for medicine, so. I, I think they, they, an attempt to make it, um, easier for people to figure out what's going on in the accident area.
Any announcements or more comments?
Of course.
Yeah, totally.
I did say. I did, you did. I got wrong. Um, I have to give a shout out to our brand new middle school dance team, she's happy. They had a team sleepover in the awesome student athlete lounge and showed up with athletic tractors and putting that whole lounge together. The kids just love it, it's got tiered couches and big screens and a refrigerator and they've got, um, the donations and the air hockey table and foosball at ping pong. And it's just, it's a great place for them to hang out between games or waiting for buses or friends or parents or whatever, and they had a sleepover in there and they just had a blast. Um, they had, like, right in early the year around the World Day, six a.m. to travel to Franklin for their very first competition. And I gotta tell you, the girls did a fabulous job representing, um, our Eagle. We got lots of compliments, no one there believed when they learned that that was their very first competition. They had presented themselves very well, these girls basically have little to no dance background, they just started learning how to do it. And they are going up against schools of dancers that live with a creative dance. So they, there was a lot of personal wins and victories, it was very exciting to watch the journey, they've come so far already. And I'm just so excited to see where these girls and this team will be in six months or a year from now. And I can't wait for when they start performing locally, encourage everybody, when they go to the basketball games, to check out these girls because they've been working really hard and they're just doing phenomenal. So I just had to give them a shout out because it's exciting, it's a first. It's always scary to step up and be the first one to try something new and these girls are just doing a fabulous job and you guys all have been so proud to see them there. It's exciting.
I have two things, while I'm very proud of the work that we've done to make our district very financially solid, I would like to say that I don't think that we did it at all at the cost of the academic success of our students or the opportunities that we've provided our students. I think that we've done a very good job of balancing that and I haven't heard from anyone in the community that thinks we haven't. So I, I'm very proud of all the aspects of what we did. The second thing that I have, and I'm gonna use my teacher posting, this is a publication, that's an international school arts publication. And our very own art teacher at Eagle Elementary, Beth Goberstein, it, has written and submitted an article that has been published. He, this art was done by her students, that's featured in this article. There's a reference to her employment within our school, the strength, and I think it's, goes as a testament, once again, that we continue to offer fabulous opportunities and hire quality staff within our walls. I'd like to see it, uh, share it, are welcome to my charts.
And I, it's in here and it just, we all saw it, public gifts and donation. It was Justin and Shelley Thomas that donated the refrigerator for the student athletic lounge and the air hockey table for the student lounge. So I just think it's a shout out to, um, the Thomas family for donating, um, because I know the kids really like that.
And I just wanna retouch on the fact that the Athletic Boosters Holiday Zar is the twentieth, which is a week from Saturday. It's their biggest fundraiser, it's an awesome event that brings tons of people into this building. Um, last year was on a little bit of a smaller note because of COVID, I think this year it's gonna be back as big as it always has been, so.
They, they're still not gonna use this gym though.
Okay.
It's gonna be.
Haulways.
Yeah, hallways and that gym down there. There's just not enough vendors anymore. Right now, she just doesn't have enough vendors and we just kinda wanted to stay spread out a little bit more too, so. It's still gonna be, it hurts some small. It is less set up and clean up and right now it's a little hard to get out here for all that stuff, so.
It'd be great if everybody comes and, and boosters I think are doing, um, concessions, so it helps back for two.
Pre-pubs back this year?
Come between morning and afternoon hunt.
What was that?
It's like come between morning and afternoon hunt?
Oh, yeah. It's always got openers. Yeah, pre-pubs.
We're seeking in here, are pre-pubs.
They're not doing a booster. No. It was banned.
Michael, Eddie, you're a boy scout or somewhere, they go in the pre-pubs.
Uh, am I true, not sure.
Yeah, you have to talk to Joe on that.
Oh, Seattle scout manager for Eagle, I don't know what's going on.
Okay, um, upcoming meetings and events are listed, just note that the public relations meeting is not November eighteenth, as there is listed here, it's going to be November seventeenth, still at five thirty. Uh, can we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post. We are adjourned at seventeen fifty.